Okay. I call this meeting to order as everyone will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes from...
Could you pull the mic closer?
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Usually no one needs a mic when they're in my office. I'm usually loud. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 7th, 2021. I'm assuming everybody has had an opportunity to review those. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the board to address the board on agenda items only. Anyone?
Public.
Okay. Resolutions. Twenty-one dash zero two zero one, approving current payables. Brian.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund number is two two five two one five dash sixty six one seven. Closer. Awarding $3,755,940 to 22%. Electronic fund transfer to all payroll accounts lower than $5,000. $671,034 and $23 cents adopted regularly used by Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021.
Does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the current payables?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one eight eight, entering into a master service agreement.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a master service agreement with 400 technologies to provide parts, coverage, software assurance, remote monitoring, remote support, dispatch support services, and/or dedicated on-site support services for the Department of Information Technology. Agreement to commence immediately and shall end on May 31st, 2022. Adopted regularly in the meeting of Board of Commissioners, held on July 21st, 2020. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our county director, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. This master agreement will help us to maintain our current phone system. This is an annual maintenance agreement that we need to have in place to resolve any incidents with phone shutdowns and system upgrades that come through. Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Okay, if there are no questions, can I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero one eight eight?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one eight nine, accepting a proposal from Sirius Computer Solutions. Brian.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby accept the proposal from Sirius Computer Solutions for the annual maintenance of the AS400, term to begin immediately and end on April 30th, 2022. Adopted regularly in the meeting of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Once again, here is Director Brown.
Again, this is a maintenance contract to allow us to maintain our AS400 system, which supports the treasurers, tax claim, the sheriffs with sheriff sales, and the office with filings and maintenance of land records.
Any questions for Mike? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one eight eight?
Motion.
I'm sorry, is it eight eight? Eight nine?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mike.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine zero, entering into a cooperation agreement with the borough of Jessup.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby authorize to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Jessup. Be further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby award the following community development grant construction contracts for the following. WODAC Construction LLC for the Jessup Memorial Park ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project. General construction for Jessup Memorial Park ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project. WODAC Destruction LLC, 2407 Orphaned School Road, Kingsley, PA 18846. Lowest most responsible, qualified, and four, $57,500. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning.
These are standard required CDBG program agreements.
The resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Jessup and a contractor agreement with WODAC Construction LLC. They are the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Jessup Memorial Park ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project, and the project is for $57,500. Anyone have any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one nine zero?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Brendan, sticking around?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine one, entering into a cooperation agreement with Clifton Township. Brian.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby authorize to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Jessup. Be further resolved, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Block One, is hereby award the following community development block construction contracts for the following. Shawnburn Construction for the Clifton Township Building ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project. General construction for the Clifton Township for the Clifton Township Building ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project. Shawnburn Construction, 349 Rear North Main Street, Davidson, PA, lowest most responsible and qualified bidder for $46,600. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marien.
Again, these are standard required agreements for our CDBG program. The resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with Clifton Township and a contractor agreement with Shawnburn Construction. And they, again, were the lowest, most responsible bidder for general construction for the Clifton Township Building ADA Bathroom Reconstruction Project, and it is an amount of $46,660. Anyone have any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one nine one?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine two, entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby authorize to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield. Be further resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby award the following community building block made of construction contracts for the following. Mayfield Borough Bank Building ADA Restroom Project. General construction for the Mayfield Borough Bank ADA Restroom Project. WODAC Construction LLC, 2407 Orphaned School Road, Kingsley, PA 18846. Lowest most responsible, qualified, and four, $36,600. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marion.
This is another CDBG project, and again, these are standard required agreements for that program. The resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Mayfield and a contractor agreement with WODAC Construction LLC. Again, they were the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Mayfield Borough Bank Building ADA Reconstruction or Restroom Project in the amount of $36,685. Any questions?
Okay, so I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine two.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine three, entering into a memorandum of agreement with the Pennsylvania State University. Brian.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a memorandum of agreement with Pennsylvania State University for the purpose of conducting a community relations workshop for law enforcement, for curations for all, and sheriffs, parks. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Energy Resources, Director of Justice.
This is part of a continuing partnership with Penn State University. Part of this agreement will result in our law enforcement departments being trained in diversity and inclusion initiatives.
Anyone have any questions for Justin?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one nine three?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Justin. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine four, entering into a reimbursement agreement.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a cooperation agreement with Pennsylvania County Health Insurance Co-operative and Benedict for the dependent eligibility body of services agreement. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our CFO, Mr. Tom Kirk.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just an agreement with PCHIP, the Pennsylvania Health Insurance Purchasing Co-operative, which is the county cooperation agreement whereby, I think there's 19 counties involved in all managing our health insurance in the same big group. Well, we're in the process right now of doing a dependent audit on our health insurance policies. A company named BMI is doing the audit, but this agreement is an agreement with PCHIP for them to reimburse us for whatever the cost of the audit is. They had agreed to do that because they decided this was a really good thing for all the members in the consortium to do, so they found money to do it with, and they're going to reimburse us. This is the agreement whereby we have to sign it in order to get our money back. That's all.
Tom, are there any other counties doing the audits also?
I believe of the 19 counties in the cooperative, I believe all of them have agreed to have the dependent audit done.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine four?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty-one dash zero one nine five, approving the COVID-19 arts and culture grants.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve Phase One of the COVID-19 Arts and Cultural Creative Community Grants awards in the amount of $153,500. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marien.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This is, we were able to reallocate funds since a lot of our programs unfortunately were postponed or canceled due, obviously, to the COVID, so these are special community grants to put some joy back into the community, and we're really happy with them. They were all vetted through a review process.
Does anybody have any questions for Marien?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine five?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine six, awarding an arts and culture program grant.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby award all the arts and cultural programs grant in the amount of $6,000 for Jessup for the opening of their new Kids' Corner Playground with a fireworks display. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, this is a special community event.
So this is a special one-time funding because Jessup has the opening of a new Kids' Corner Playground, and it's been a difficult year to fundraise, and we are trying to help communities have these special community events during COVID.
Any questions for Marien? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero one nine six?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marien. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine seven, accepting a memorandum of agreement for the area agency on aging.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby accept the memorandum of agreement for the area agency on aging, answered with advertising, Clark Summit, to produce for Digital Public Service Act. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency, Mr. Jason Bourish.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Jason.
This is a very simple agreement. We are doing more media advertising, more social media advertising with Swida to help get the word out about the services that are offered to the area agency on aging. This agreement, although, protects the data that we gather in those efforts and makes sure that we establish ownership of that data, and protects our seniors and protects anyone using the links that we have associated with our website and keeps that ownership with us as opposed to it being allowed to be data mined anywhere else.
Any questions for Jason?
I just think it's important that everybody realizes all the services that the area agency on aging provides, so that we get everybody that's eligible to get them, that they do, whether it's vaccines, or whether it's healthcare, or whether it's transportation. And I think that the advertising will certainly increase the use, and you've been doing a great job, Jason.
You have.
Thank you, Mr. Bourish.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero one nine seven?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero two hundred, appointments to the Lackawanna County Library Board.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby reappoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Library. Brian J. Calavera, World Trade District Street Delmore, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. William Zachary, 1228 Reynolds Avenue, Hiller Temple, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. Grant Major, 937 Lincoln Street, Dixon City, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. Francis Santorello, 408 Longwood Drive, South Adams and Towne Street, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. And Jonah Holonak, 2020, Lendin Street, France, term to begin immediately and expire on June and December 31st, 2022. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 21st, 2021.
Just for the public knowledge, back on the last meeting on July 7th, under Resolution twenty-one dash zero one eight six, there were two openings on the board, so we appointed two individuals named Marien Brennan and Mary Wable. Is that right, Jason?
Yes.
Okay.
And then these five appointments are reappointments.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero two hundred?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motions. Twenty-one dash zero one nine eight, motion to direct PENDOT to enter into a bridge inspection contract with Lobella Associates on behalf of Lackawanna County to enter into a corresponding reimbursement contract with PENDOT once received and approved by the county solicitors. Brian.
Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our county engineer, Mr. Frank Sula.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. So this motion is regarding bridge inspections that the county is required to perform. As a public bridge owner, you're required to perform a certified bridge inspection at least once every two years for your qualifying bridges. This work is eligible for reimbursement through PENDOT, and Lobella Associates has held this reimbursement contract for the past five years. Lobella's contract has recently expired, and PENDOT allows the county to select the next firm. The PENDOT has received approximately 10 proposals on the county's behalf. I am the Director of the Rhode Island Bridge Department, have reviewed all the proposals. Lobella was one of the submitters, and it's our recommendation that we renew Lobella. Our opinion was they were the most qualified applicant. They know the bridge inventory from their history with the county. They have been doing a good job, and they're a local firm, so we highly recommend to retain Lobella. So the motion is to have PENDOT award the contract to Lobella and have the county enter into a corresponding agreement with PENDOT for the reimbursement.
Madam Commissioner, the motion is to meet on table and be second. If you have any questions, please.
Second.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion twenty-one dash zero one nine nine, motion to approve the maintenance and service invoices for the elevator service from Cone for $9,994.40 and Otis for $10,969.
Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Sula.
Good morning, Commissioners. The cone is for the government center. This is one for our elevators. This is a service contract that ends 12/31/21, and it's just a basic agreement. And the other basic agreement, signature service from Otis Elevator for the courthouse. The courthouse has three elevators that we have to maintain, so I just want to approve the services for this contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marien.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Mr. Frank, yes, sir. Your name is Speaker Dane, Mayor of Russell County.
Hi, my name is Eric Seltzer. I'm a concerned citizen out of Scranton, Pennsylvania. What brought me out here today is to know what processes we have in place in Lackawanna County to ensure that we have the integrity of our last presidential election, and what processes we're going to force on or focus on to ensure that the processes were held and we have the rightful president that we should have. Whether the results are solid or whatnot, I'm not here to debate that. I just want to know what processes we have in place as a county to ensure that the integrity of our elections are upheld.
Who wants to answer that?
Sure. Thank you.
The solicitor of the...
All right, Frank. It's time.
Well, what I can tell you is the election was conducted according to the law. It was on, we tried to, you know, correct, there were no additional ballots or missing ballots, you know, like that in Lackawanna County.
In fact, we were the first large county in Lackawanna County in the state of Pennsylvania to have the election done that night, so there was no delay in counting. The ballots were all processed and counted election night, and in fact, we had it reported to the state by 11 o'clock that night. So I mean, that's what I can tell you with regard to that. Both representatives of the Republican and Democratic Party, also representatives of the Trump administration, were there, watched the canvassing of the votes, and nobody raised any issues or concerns with it. So as far as we're concerned, you know, the election was conducted according to law.
There would be no further action into that. It is solid concrete. That's where we're sticking with it.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
This one has been put away, yes. It's been put...
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer. Seltzer.
Seltzer, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
By no means am I a public speaker or anything of the sort, but my name is Ted Zeiler. I live over here in Cortez, Jefferson Township. I'm here representing the VFW Post 6520 and the Veterans Home Association of Cortez. I don't know if you ever had the opportunity, but if you've ever gone down Cortez Road, you've seen our facility, which is approximately three miles from here on the right, but it's a facility that we built ourselves. And right now, we would like to ask the Commissioners if it would be possible if we could get a grant where we could purchase a generator, where in case of a state of emergency, our facility would be accepted and approved as a place where people from the community could go for food, water, restrooms. Of course, you have to plug in our cell phones, but we would greatly appreciate your consideration, and we respectfully request some funding if we could.
I actually know where your post is, and Ms. Brenda Sacco is here now, and she is our economic development director, and she can probably find you money. She can probably help you with that.
She's very, she's very good at her job.
Yeah, make it a point to talk to her before you leave.
Can I give you a hug later? Sure. Thank you. Hey, thank you for what you do.
Anyone else? No?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, other business. Frank?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the county commissioners. In the fall 2020, Lackawanna County and the city of Scranton entered into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement so Lackawanna County could begin collecting Scranton's delinquent property taxes. This agreement was the culmination of a set of discussions and negotiations that first began some four years prior in 2016. Thereafter, Lackawanna County began collecting Scranton's delinquent property taxes. To date, since April 2021, Lackawanna County has delivered to Scranton an amount in excess of $3.3 million of delinquent property taxes already collected, which does not yet include July's collections. In each and every instance, the city has gladly accepted these amounts. To say the program is a success is an understatement. In return, Lackawanna County, its employees and selected council, who worked diligently on behalf of the county and the city to help collect and deliver those millions of dollars to Scranton, have come under scrutiny for no good acceptable reason, but only because of a false narrative presented by the city and continued by some local print media. There is no need to regurgitate the narrative as it has been widely discussed and reported. This despite the current intergovernmental cooperation agreement being 5% less than the city's previous collection rate, and most importantly, the delinquent fee is now borne only by the delinquent taxpayer and not by all other timely paying taxpayers, as had been the case. The attorney and administrative fee, which is 10% collectively, is paid by the delinquent taxpayer and not from the delinquent taxes that are collected. This directly results in more delinquent tax dollars going back to the city of Scranton and the entirety of its residents, as it should. Efforts to work through this false narrative have unfortunately been unsuccessful. This good agreement and wildly successful program have become so politicized to where it literally has dominated the headlines over the past few months, but most importantly, it has detracted and taken time away from the other important work that we at the county are responsible to ensure gets done concerning all of the other municipalities and residents who reside here in Lackawanna County. It is no longer acceptable that this issue detract from all that still must occur and is required to get done in Lackawanna County. Although this particular arrangement did not prove successful, the county remains committed to working with the city and its administration and council in future projects and doing what is best in serving our common constituency. Accordingly, Lackawanna County will be terminating the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the city of Scranton in accordance with Section 5 of said agreement. Commissioners, additionally, I've prepared the notification, which will be forwarded this morning, to Attorney O'Brien on behalf of the administration and their solicitor, as well as Attorney Kevin Hayes, who is city council solicitor. Thank you.
Anything else? Jerry?
No.
Bruce?
Well, I'm just a little disappointed with that, that we couldn't come to an agreement.
Well, and they still have time to do that, Bruce. I mean, they can still deal with it, and it's been going back and forth now for months.
I understand.
Just nonsense.
But it's unfortunate.
It is.
A lot of work.
And maybe it'll get back to where it should be, but under the certain circumstances, it's not acceptable.
I think it was, as Frank said, we've, I think we've talked about at the last meeting, generally speaking, they used to bring in $700,000 to $750,000 a year for delinquent taxes, and how many months did you say, Frank? Three?
You're correct, Madam.
They, you know, we turned over $3 million to them, so it's to their benefit, but it's getting to the point where we are doing everything that we're supposed to do under the contract drafted and signed by the city, and we can no longer, we have duties to this county, and we can no longer spend any more time arguing with them over something that they asked.
An agreement that they drafted and they signed, they passed the council meetings and the mayor signed, and then they questioned after them. It's absolutely ridiculous, and we just have to go forward, and if they want to revisit this, we'll be glad to listen to them.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to do that after I adjourned. I just would like to thank, just want to get the names right, Jefferson Township Supervisors, Matthew Pendra, did I say that correctly? John Peters, and Jason Hollis... John Peters and Jason Hollister, and we want to give a special shout-out and thank you to the Secretary and Treasurer, Colleen Watt, who helped set up this meeting. So, thank you, everybody. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.